Hello and welcome to the November 13, 2007 study session for the Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. We have a number of items on our current business agenda for the study session and because we do also have a heavy closed session agenda, we will be concluding this portion of the meeting, the study session, by no later than 5:30, so just in case anybody wants to know. All right, we'll start with clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, number seven, which is money to spend on the Pelican Hills North, do we want to wait until we're sure that the easement is being granted by the homeowners association before we spend any more money there?
I guess that certainly could be an option, but and we could go ahead and authorize this amendment and we won't authorize the consultant to move forward till we have that.
Okay.
I think that would be a good approach.
Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes, and that's 20, that's the item with the consultant helping us out with the LCP and it's structured as a flat monthly fee of $10,000 per month, but it indicates if not much work is done that month, then the city would negotiate a reduction. And I know we've had instances of consultants when being paid in excess of $10,000 when there wasn't any time worked on that month. So I would request that within the monthly billing statements, that those statements reflect the time spent as well as the activity and then that could be used as a basis for negotiating any reduction as well as public record for any citizens that would inquire about some of these consulting contracts. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I talked with Councilwoman Daigle right before the meeting about this and I gave Sharon a heads up and I guess there had been some discussions about that very thing, if she could explain that real quickly.
Yeah, we did start with this consultant as well as with two other consultants that we spoke to about helping us with the LCP issues, about providing more detail in their proposal as to exactly what they would be doing for a certain amount of money within a month. And none of them was receptive to that and we finally concluded it's because they are used to working in the private sector because they represent developer clients rather than public entities who have this concern and need to show a closer tie. So we will certainly try to have the statements provide the information you're looking for, but I'm just not sure that they will agree to that. We've had to do a lot of negotiation from some of our standard provisions as it was.
Who are you asking me?
I don't have follow-up at this time.
Okay, so we'll move on. Councilman Webb? Councilman Hen?
I have three to ask about. Item number six, on-call striping and painting. Steve, do you know, rough and tough, what's the approximate percentage of all the striping work that's done in the city? What approximate percentage of that work is covered by this agreement? I couldn't, you know, there was no real.
We could ask that of Mark Harmon or Mike Pisani.
Approximately, Mayor, members of the council, approximately 90% of the striping is done by contract in the city.
Oh, okay. Then that obviates my second question about whether we've considered outsourcing all of that work.
Yes, with our small crew, it's easier to contract that out.
Okay, then let's move on to the next item. Item number 13, with regard to Gary Sherwin's advisory work for other CVBs, is that work for additional compensation to him?
Yes, it is.
And how much is that additional compensation? Do we have any idea?
I don't have any idea. I think it depends upon, you know, what contractual arrangement he has to do consulting work with other CVBs.
And are there any agreed-upon limits to the amount of that activity that he performs on behalf of others? I'm just, you know where I'm headed with this, I'm concerned about the appropriate level of attention to Newport Beach CVB and the possibility of confusion.
And Councilman Hen, I don't know if those discussions have taken place between his board and Gary Sherwin, I would imagine that they have and when he was hired, it was probably under the, you know, with the knowledge that he would do some consulting work.
I'm not per se expressing opposition to that idea, although I would request that, can we ask the board to get some clarification on that?
Sure.
The amount of compensation and the extent to which there are any limits or expectations associated with that?
Okay, I will find that out.
And then lastly, item number 16 is, this is the LCP draft, is this the exact same draft that was presented to council on March 27?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Curry?
No items to pull, but just to note, number 14, for those who may be watching home and planning to come down, which is the Panini Cafe Appeal, that issue is not going to be heard tonight, it's going to be continued due to a publication error by the Daily Pilot. I know, I think people have been slow to hear the word that it's going to be continued, so if you're home and concerned about this, this is not the night to come down. Thanks.
Mayor Protem Solich?
I asked all my questions ahead of time.
As you should. Thank you, and I have none. We'll move on to our second item.
Mr. Mayor, our first item, or second item this morning, but first one presented by staff, is the implementation of the new integrated library system. This item is actually a consent calendar item, but we wanted to give you some more background on exactly what this system would do. So Linda Catzelaus will provide that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Basically, I hope you're going to ask all of your technical questions now, because I've got staff with me that actually knows the answers. I'd like to introduce them. This is Genesis Hansen, she is our webmaster, and this is Sean Verley, he's in charge of all of our library systems and knows them inside and out. We're going to give you a very brief whirlwind tour of what we've done. It's all in the packet that you receive, but we'll go over it quickly and then you're free to ask us any questions. Up front, we have the money. The foundation has committed and we have some extra funds from an estate that we received money for.
Genesis?
Thank you, hello. Okay, so Integrated Library System software is an automated software program designed to integrate all of the data, all of the processes of the library into a unified system. There's different modules for all the different things that we do, but basically every transaction that happens at the library goes through our Integrated Library Systems software. Our current vendor is Cersei Dynex. In 1987, we contracted with a company then called Dynex for our first integrated library system. And in 2001, we migrated to an upgraded product by the same vendor called Horizon, that's our current system that we have right now at the library. The upgrade was a upgrade from a, to a Windows-based system. But there's been some signs of trouble and in 2005, the Cersei Corporation bought out Dynex, they had a competing product and they promised to develop both at the same time. Then in 2006, Vista Equity Partners acquired Cersei Dynex. And in February of 2007, the CEO of Cersei Dynex stepped down. And then a little bit later in 2007, earlier this year, Cersei Dynex announced that they would stop development of the Horizon product, which is our current system. No more upgrades, no more development, they're discontinuing that product and will cease to support it at some point in the future. This was a major shakeup in the library world, this is a major vendor, about a third of public libraries in the US are on this system. So it was, it was a major shakeup for our library world. But out of the rubble, we decided to be proactive in pursuing a solution. We assembled a team of library staff from all of our different departments to evaluate different systems. We invited vendors, including Cersei Dynex, to come and do demonstrations. And our, we also invited other libraries to come and participate. So many libraries have been shaken up by this occurrence that we knew other people would be interested in exploring other systems as well. So we did invite other libraries and many came to our demonstrations. Through that process, we narrowed our choices down to two. We selected Innovative Interfaces Millennium System and Polaris as the top two contenders. As our blueprint for success, we wanted to thoroughly examine these two systems. We arranged for not just demonstrations, but hands-on time with both systems for our staff. We also contacted other library customers of both vendors to find out what their experiences were and what their experience with the companies were and with the products. And we also discussed the hardware and software requirements with the IT department. Out of that, we selected Innovative Interfaces Millennium as our clear choice. It was a far superior product. We felt that Polaris was a distant second. Innovative is a much stronger company for building our future with. They ranked number one in new name sales in 2006. They have 4,500, over 4,500 libraries that they're serving and a 99% customer retention rate since their founding. They're based in California, they're financially healthy, and for nearly 30 years, they've been profitable every month and every quarter. They don't have any outside investors or corporate parents, they have stable senior management, it's a privately held company. They have a very active staff, 50% of their staff is in customer service, all of the support is based in California, and their support staff ratio of 7.5 is the best ratio in the industry. And they also have 25% of their staff in product development, so there's no outsourcing, all the programming is done here in California. They also have 100-plus librarians on staff and what that means is that they're designing software with the knowledge of people who are actually using the software and know how it needs to work. They've never had layoffs, it's a very stable company. As I said, over 4,500 libraries use, worldwide use Millennium. There's over 140 libraries in California using Millennium. Eighty, over 80 of these are public libraries and they include Thousand Oaks, Palos Verdes, Riverside, Beverly Hills, San Diego County, San Francisco Public, Oakland, there's others as well. This was our, our clear choice and it offers an easy-to-use catalog for the public with a lot of nice features. We're looking at a bigger and better system here. It's, it allows us to grow, it's platform independent, it's got a really intuitive staff-client interface and in our high turnover staff areas, circulation, where, which is kind of an entry-level position, high turnover, our, our system needs to be really easy to train and this is by far the best solution that we've found for that. It's much more intuitive, easy to understand, easy to train, but what we're really excited about is what it does for our customers. There are, it gives us all the functionality that we currently have, plus a lot of new patron empowerment features, things like RSS feeds, they can create their own searches and have the catalog automatically update those and notify them when new items that they're interested in come in. It allows them to do the same things that they're doing now in terms of placing their own holds, suspending holds when they go on vacation, things like that. It's also a much more intuitive catalog, it, it's easier to learn, easier to search, it has that, that kind of functionality that we've all gotten used to with Google, where if you misspell something, it will say, "Did you mean?", and give you the proper spelling, which we really have been looking for. And the, the overall ability to integrate it with our existing site, some of the other vendors really want you to use their product kind of in lieu of a website or other products, but we wanted something that really integrates well with what we already have and this is the product that can do it. And it also works with our existing vendors and jobbers that we contract with for various features and functions. So the, the contract negotiation has, has been completed, the contract has gone through legal, and with the approval of the city council and the funding from the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation, we can install the Millennium system early, in late spring of 2008. So that's it. Any other questions?
I'd like to compliment you on your PowerPoint. I, I know you structured it just for me because of the civil engineering background I have, but I understood everything you said.
Wonderful.
Any other questions?
Sounds like you got a great program. Okay.
I have a great staff who did a wonderful job in getting this together. I would like to mention Mrs. Fleaner, that is the person whose estate gave us the extra money that allowed us to go forward, but this, I was distracted and couldn't think of her name a moment ago, but it was the Fleaner Estate, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Okay, next item on the agenda is the fire potential in Newport Beach Canyons.
And I think this arose from Councilwoman Gardner, who, two weeks ago, at this time, we had some of our firefighters who were on the front line of the Santiago Fire, and she asked what was the status of Buck Canyon and the fire situation there, so Steve Bunting will provide that overview.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council, Steve Bunting, Fire Department. As Mr. Blodow said, about a month ago, my inspector came into the office one day and told me that we had 30 properties in Lower Buck Gully and Morning Canyon that hadn't complied with this year's fuel modification, or hazard reduction clearance, final notice, first final notice, I should say. And I was very surprised by that because usually at that point, our, we're down to about four or six that haven't complied. So to have a number like 30 was very shocking. And that meant 30 properties that we were going to have to force clear, actually send a city contractor in there to clear. So I sent Mrs. Gardner and Mr. Blodow just a heads-up warning that they're probably going to get some calls about this. Well, we continued to work on that and we, we got the numbers down and they were reluctant for a number of reasons, and we cleared our final one this morning. So, so we're now at 100% compliance, but it was quite a surprise to have that many people refuse to do their property. I wanted to show you what we do in Buck Gully and Morning Canyon annually, and I gave each of you this little packet, and I'll just walk you through it real quick and show you what our process is. The, the area we're talking about, hello, the area we're talking about, if you, okay, I get, there's some pictures in the back of your packet, see the photograph in the back of the packet? This is, this is an interesting photo. This is a photo, at the top of the arrow, was taken looking up Lower Buck Gully in 1973. And if you look at that photo, you can actually see dirt, you can see ground at the bottom of Buck Gully. And if you flip the page, that's a photo taken almost the same angle in 2002, and you can see that it's all grown in. And, you know, therein lies what our problem is. But what we did is, in 1999, we used grant money, some, from a FEMA grant, and we assisted the homeowners by paying 75 cents on the dollar to help them clear their property. After that property was cleared and it was brought up to a standard that the community and the Fire Department had agreed to and was, was then adopted by ordinance, we baselined every single property and we used Dudix and Dudix and Associates, a consulting firm, to do that work for us. And the product they produced is this map, this CAD drawing that's on the cover of your packet. We have one of those for every single property in Buck Gully and Morning Canyon. Then what we do is every three years, Dudix does an inspection of those properties and makes sure that it's still in compliance with this CAD drawing. Now they can add a plant if it's in the, if it's on our approved plant list, they can't if it's not on the approved list, they have to keep their vegetation in accordance with the standards. So for this property on Hazel Drive, the notice we gave them is on page two, of all those plants on their back property, only one of them was out of compliance, and that was tree T4 in the upper right-hand corner there. And it was out of compliance because it didn't have enough vertical separation from the ground cover and the bottom of the tree. And the next, we, we also take a photo of that and send them the photo. So the next picture is a photo of that single tree that was out of compliance. So for that particular property, all they needed to do was go clear that one, one tree and they would have been in compliance with the rest of their property. The inspection is done every three years by Dudix and Associates. We have that canyon divided into thirds and they go out and they do one-third of it, Lower Buck and Morning Canyon, Middle Buck and Upper Buck, every three years. The homeowners are supposed to clear their property every year, but they wait until they get their notice from us every three years. Not all of them, but most of them do. So that might be a problem, Mr. Blodow and I have talked about stepping up the frequency of that inspection and possibly dividing the work into two years, so that someone gets an inspection every other year. So that's, that's the process that we use to do, to do the inspection. Like I said, we're, it's a little late, but we're at 100% compliance, so. Any questions?
Councilman Hen?
Yes.
Or Gardner?
Just, is there resistance or is it just carelessness as far as?
There's, there's a lot of resistance. We started in earnest in those canyons in 1990, an effort made by Chief Riley, Chief Reed at the time, and we passed a resolution back in 1990 that was then retracted by the council because of all the resistance from the homeowners in that community. And then after the 1993 fire in Laguna Beach, we attempted to pass another resolution and we were, a group down there called Friends of Buck Gully organized, and they again fought us and we again were unable to pass a resolution. Around 1998, we did come to terms with them and we came up with some standards that we could live with. I feel they're a little weak personally, but we are able to live with them and the community was able to live with them and those are the standards that we enforce today. So despite the fires that we had and despite the track record and despite what everybody knows, there's a lot of community resistance in Buck Gully. I know we received letters from homeowners down there that feel we're not doing enough and I have to say that I agree with them, I wish that we could do more, but what we're doing is what the community down there will tolerate.
Well, it's my community. I really do, I would, I would support and I think, I hope the rest of the council would support stepping up the, to, every other year instead of every three years. I think that whatever the extra cost is, is nothing compared to the devastation of a fire. And then my second question, or third or whatever it is, goats? How are we coming with our goats?
They've, they've completed all the research, they understand all of the regulations that we're going to face and they're, they've completed their cost analysis and they're starting to write the report. So I would say another month and we'll have a report and I'll come, I'll come back to you with that. And, and for the rest of the council members, what our intent is on that, we had an analysis done two years ago on clearing the canyon by hand and right now, we asked the homeowner to do 100 feet from behind his home down the canyon, I'm sorry, to the center of the canyon, it's about 170 feet on average. So what we asked the consultants to do was look to see what that additional 70 feet would cost to do it by hand, and the number came back at about $750,000. So I thought, well, what if we run the goats through there first and get all the old under stuff eaten out and then have it reappraised and see what the new cost will be? And so that's what, that's what we intend to do.
I know that there are a lot of regulatory issues that we have to deal with as far as the goats, but is there any, I know that with blood control, when they wanted to clean out the San Diego Creek, they just said, "Oh, there's an emergency" and they didn't have to get all the approvals. Is there anything like that as far as fires?
There is, there is, and Laguna Beach just invoked it last week. City manager forced cleared some, some property that Coastal Commission wouldn't give them permission to do and so he did it anyway.
Okay.
And so, yeah, there is a provision in the government code for that, so. I believe it's good to cooperate with the other governmental agencies, so we're gonna, I think we ought to try that.
I don't disagree with that.
The, the one difference is, is that, that when the city manager did that, it was during the middle of the fires and they were, you know, Laguna Beach never knows when there's going to be a fire in that canyon that's going to create a problem, so. But the issue was environmental, that was the biggest issue on plants that were growing and it was higher up and both of the, both of the canyons that we have, the bigger issue is the water quality, so that's something that we have to look at.
And also, the, the issue of dispute between the community and the Fire Department down there has always been just at the separation of the trees. We were able to reach agreement on everything else. There's a standard in the country, in this country called the Urban Wildland Interface Standard. We don't adopt it, but a lot of places do. We, we do use the guidelines that are in it and those guidelines call for 10-foot separation between tree canopies. And the homeowners down there didn't want that, they wanted the trees to be able to Comparatively, the fuel modification standards that apply to the Newport Coast area require a tree separation triple the height of a tree. So if a tree is 10 feet, it, it needs to be 30 feet away from its closest tree. What we asked for in our hazard reduction standards in Buck Gully, Morning Canyon, was 10 feet of separation and we didn't get that. So that's the difference between what we have in our code now and what the Urban Wildland Interface Standard recommends, is a 10-foot separation between the trees. So that's also something I, we could possibly revisit. It would, it would really mean the loss of a lot of trees. A lot of them don't touch, they're actually interlaced. Yes, my time's up.
Well, I did have a question.
Yes, sir.
Would, I'm not sure what's, that's me. Would you consider this to be the most serious wildfire threat area within the boundaries of Newport Beach? How does this stack up in terms of its?
Buck Gully?
Yeah.
Absolutely, I do. I, we, we project a fire in Buck Gully taking out most of Corona del Mar.
Yeah.
So.
So.
It's.
That leads me to chime in with Councilwoman Gardner about this and I do have some concern about it. I, I used to live in an area that was right next to the San Gabriel National Forest and I got a notice from the Fire Department in that city every single year to clear, I had a hill next to my home that was unimproved and I had to clear it every year and they enforced that every year I had to clear that. And so my question is, do we send notices to these homeowners that they are supposed to do this every year? Do they get some reminder?
They get, they get the violation notice and this packet I just gave you every third year. And our public education at the time we started this program was for them to make sure they understand that they needed to keep it, you know, cleared all the time and that we were inspecting it every third year, but perhaps we need to increase that.
I'm not sure what the right solution here is, but what I do know is that the homeowners in that area, I think are subject to a greater obligation to the people that live in the area to provide a safe environment there. And so for myself, I would like to see some recommendations for what would make you comfortable with that area by way of improved fire safety. I mean, we've just had an unbelievable demonstration of the destruction that can occur in a wildfire. We've just had an unbelievable demonstration of the destruction that can occur in a wildfire.
And if I can, Councilman Henn, we're talking about approximately 250 homeowners that are affected by these regulations. And as Steve said, the potential for the fire to race down Buck Gully and to threaten houses, you know, in Corona Del Mar and the houses are very close together, there is a serious, serious issue.
It seems to me that could turn into an urban wildfire without a lot of difficulty. And so, you know, I understand that concerns the people that live there and they have concerns about their property and what it looks like and their rights, but I think we have to have a greater view of this, it seems to me.
Councilman Curry?
Steve, I was a little surprised by the number of houses that were not in compliance going into fire season in Buck Gully and Morning Canyon. Thinking about Newport Coast as a whole, do we have other areas where we have compliance issues or are we generally in good shape with the fuel mod zones in Newport Coast?
The fuel mod zones in Newport Coast are good. We've got some other work that needs to be done due to misunderstanding between us and the Orange County Fire Department. And we will get to that. But we inspect annually the fuel modification zones in Newport Coast and they're good. The people that were out on the fires in Santiago have told me that when the fire hit the fuel modification zone, it just slowed down. There were still embers being produced and delivered by the wind, but the fire's just really slowed down. And that's what the fuel mod zone is intended to do. It's intended, the fuel mod zone combined with the construction standards of the homes that are built in these areas is designed to slow the fire down as it approaches the home and then provide nothing at the home to ignite. So, the fire department can't show up. You know, theoretically, the fire should just about burn itself out. That's the way fuel mod zones are designed. There are a series of zones that start off with your irrigated ornamental vegetation behind the home and then the zone increases in hazard as it moves down the hill for about four zones. So, it's a good idea, it is the answer, it is the one solution that works. We've seen it time to time again. We're getting that in Buck Gully and Morning Canyon. Our ordinance, our regulations in Newport Beach require that if you remodel or rebuild a home, you have to convert your hillside to fuel modification. So, right now, we have a little bit of a patchwork down in the canyon. And it's neat to see that it's coming, but every home that gets rebuilt, they have to submit a plan for fuel modification, just like in Newport Coast. And it's good. Take a while, but we're gonna get them all eventually.
Councilman Webb?
You have kind of overlooked Morning, or haven't mentioned Morning Canyon, but isn't it, it's almost as bad as Buck Gully? Particularly between Coast Highway and the ocean?
Yes, it is. And that's been included in the goat study, that's included in the inspection. And it was part of those homes, those 30 homes this year that weren't in compliance was Morning Canyon.
How do you feel about Big Canyon? The mouth of Big Canyon really from Back Bay Drive up to Jamboree, do you feel that's pretty good?
It's, you know, it's starting to look like that picture I gave you. I remember when you could walk through the center of that. And I just noticed the other day, and it really looks like this picture of Buck Gully, I mean, you know, lower Buck Gully that I gave you. It's really grown in. And on the Park Newport side, it's all pine trees between the bottom of the canyon and the wood-sided apartments in Park Newport.
What should we be doing? Aren't we, are we inspecting that area too?
Yeah, they do clearance, they clear the trees, but I believe that Buck Gully has now, I mean, I'm sorry. Big Canyon, the Big Canyon outlet there is protected and I don't think we can do anything with it. I'm not sure.
What you're really saying is the Fish and Game Department type people are controlling whether or not we have fires in our adjacent property?
Well, I have a very bad example, Harbor Cove development at the end of Santa Barbara and Jamboree. That was restored, on their north slope was restored native habitat. And it was irrigated. And those people have brushed 10 feet deep behind their back, they have a glass wall behind their homes and the brushes become 10 feet deep back there. And it's protected and we absolutely cannot touch it. So, it's, yeah, we do have those problems. We're looking at some plans for a development at the Hyatt Newporter and we're going to avoid that problem this time.
Yeah, one other area, the, there's a canyon that kind of goes up from, between San Miguel and Spyglass Hill. There's a little, you access it through the park.
Yeah, Mission Bay Canyon.
Is that what that's called?
Yeah.
How is that?
That's city-owned property and the city pays for, they have the best clearance in the city, but it's city-owned property and we clear that every single year, 100 feet below the homes.
Councilman Henn?
Yeah, one more question and then I'd like to come back to my fellow council members here, but you mentioned a first final notice? It seems like an oxymoron to me. What is that?
We ended up giving two final notices to those people. I, you know, we really.
You don't need to go any further with your answer. Here's my point. I feel very uncomfortable as a council member here, being informed that the number one wildfire risk within our borders is being treated with more relaxed requirements for preparation against wildfires than other areas of the city, including areas right adjacent to it. I'm very uncomfortable with that. I would, and I'd like to solicit the views of my fellow council members as to whether we should be requesting to get additional recommendations from you regarding that area. And I'd be glad to engage in another outreach situation with those homeowners and others, by the way, that are near that area to arrive at a conclusion that makes sense. But I'm uncomfortable with the way this conversation's come out.
I did ask our city attorney about the agreement and it's more of a understanding. Is that not correct?
Correct. And whatever the agreement was, I mean, with, as far as the terms or whatever, they're not binding upon the city forever. So, if they're, they're just kind of a, it's a historical background and it's the way that we're operating right now, but there's nothing that prevents the city council from relooking at the issues and making another determination.
Councilman Webb?
From a legal standpoint, what about the Harbor Cove issue that was just mentioned where we have potential flammable material that's right up next to the property, but it's in a nature area or natural area as well as Big Canyon? Shouldn't we be able to provide health and safety rules and regulations related to our citizens that might override the need to have those bushes that were planted when the tract was put in?
I do not know whether those bushes were planted as a result of the tract being put in. Are they on private property or on the public property? See, I don't know enough about it, but.
It's on city property.
It's in the, what we call John Wayne Valley area.
Then I think that we should engage with the state officials to resolve that issue.
So, US Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah, we need to work with them to resolve that issue.
I'm concerned, it's more isolated than Buck Gully or Morning Canyon, but it's still serious to have that type of flammable material up that close.
Yeah. We gave it a real effort. We went through all the agencies that regulate it and made an effort. And, you know, at one point, US Fish and Wildlife Service said we could possibly pay $50,000 an acre to mitigate that. It's two and a half acres that we need to mitigate, that we need to clear.
They may also, though, I think a lot of times attitudes change when we go through something like we've just gone through. It might be a good time to approach and just say, we're very concerned and we need to make a change here.
And now might be a reopener type condition.
Yeah, I would really, I would really like to take care of that area, it's a big concern of mine.
Councilman Solich?
Yes. Well, I think I'm the only one up here that used to live on one of these canyons. I used to live on the lower end of Morning Canyon and I remember in the early 90s when you guys came through there and, you know, it's been years and years since anything's been done. And the bill I had in my property was horrendous because over 50% of my property was down in the, down in the gully there. And certainly didn't have anything like this, so this is a, this is a great improvement. I guess the thing that concerns me a little bit on it is that a lot of the, these properties, the folks don't have use of the property because of all the environmental restrictions. And I'm just wondering, is there a large financial burden that gets put on some of these larger properties, particularly the ones in Buck Gully, not so much Morning Canyon, but those get to be pretty big over there and a lot of acreage to be maintaining that they're really limited on how they can use the property? Do you have any idea what it costs someone a year to take care of this?
Lady in middle Buck that first approached me about the goats spends $5,000 to $8,000 every three years to clear her property because it's so steep. Others with just a single tree, like the photograph I showed you, that's something they get their gardener to take care of or they take care of themselves. So, there's the range, probably.
Is it something that the cost would be reduced if people had their gardeners do it on a monthly basis rather than waiting, you know, for a whole year?
Well, actually, one of the solutions we offer them is to convert to fuel modification because it does have lower maintenance fees. And it's a little bit higher, you know, it costs them a little bit of money to landscape to fuel modification to begin with, but once they've done it, it's less money. So, yeah, there are things they can do to reduce their cost. The people who just clear it every three years and let it grow back, they're not helping themselves.
And the fuel mod zones like up in areas like Newport Coast, those are all common areas, so those are all supported by homeowners fees, right, to maintain those?
That's correct and the city does reimburse some of those homeowners associations for that work. The A-zone, the area between the house and the top of the B-zone, which is generally the top of the hill, that's taken care of by the homeowner.
Thank you.
I would like, oh, I'm sorry.
I can just tell you that the hill beside my house, next to the San Gabriel Forest, was about a third of an acre, maybe a little more. And it cost me about $1,000 once a year to clear that extraneous combustible material. And so, it was just, it was just a part of the landscaping cost that I incurred for living in that home every year. And that's how I looked at it and I supported that and I did it. And that's how other people should look at it. And if you do keep after it every year, it is less expensive. There's no question about that.
Well, I'd like to see you and the department come back with a proposed plan for these areas that we can use as a basis for outreach. And, you know, obviously, we're not just gonna do it without any public input, but that would give us a starting point of, this is the ideal and then we can go from there.
We will.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for having me.
Any further questions with council? I'll open up for public comment. Actually, I never ask for public comment on the library thing.
Unless you did.
Okay, if anybody wants to comment on the library thing, you can come up as well.
Good afternoon, members of council staff and all those here in the audience and wherever you are. My name is Laura Dietz and for years I have pounded on the fact that I thought the most dangerous element to this public safety and security and economic viability of Corona Del Mar was the overgrowth of brush in those specific canyons. Unlike many of the new developments in many of those fire areas where they had the MFZs and just like Newport Coast, we've got this older community. And with that older community, yes, it comes some advantages, but it also comes with those disadvantages that, as has been pointed out, the houses are close together. To the access for the fire department is extremely poor. I mean, you just don't, can't run a truck between, even between two houses. So, I would concur with Councilwoman Gardner's comments and hope that we will get something very substantive, something that's at a minimum, once-a-year notification from the fire department and a lot of education. And I'm sure that the Corona Del Mar Resident Association, who I've been a member for several years, will support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
My name is George Jeffries. I'm a resident of Corona Del Mar. I commend Councilman Henn on his observations, which have taken about half of the things that I was going to say. I walk this regularly and today I got on Google, I looked at the pictures, aerial photographs of these areas from Google, and they simply show overgrown brush right up to the edges of houses. If you go to the Fifth and Poinsettia, you'll see a house with a large bush going up almost over its roof that is directly up against the house. If you go to the parkways on those streets, you will see city parkways with eucalyptus trees on them, approximately 40 feet high, maybe higher, that are an incredible hazard. So, you can see what's gonna happen with the fire. It's gonna come, not if, but when, if something is not done. And what's going to happen is that the fire's gonna go right up the slope, it's gonna burn the house, the house is gonna burn the tree, the wind at 50 miles an hour is gonna take all the tops of the trees and the other stuff, broadcast it all over the flower streets in Corona Del Mar and we're gonna lose the community. Now, I really think that you really have the big picture, Councilman Henn, in terms of the concern that our people should be spending with reference to this issue and perhaps our resources as well. I think we need to be rapid in responding to this issue before something more serious happens. We're fortunately entering a wet period. That doesn't mean this stuff isn't dry, oily and combustible. I hope you will see the urgency of this concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Philip Vettencourt. I am a director and a past president of the Newport Coast Association along with my colleague, Jerry Ross, who's here. We're both wildland residents, but I just wanted to take a moment to salute the staff and the fire department for working with us because our situation is obviously different. We have a comprehensive easement and maintenance program, but the reason that it works is that we have sound regulations, we have regular inspections, we stay in touch with the fire department when they find us, if we ever get in deficiency, and we appreciate the work that our fire department and the rest of the staff does to keep our homes and property safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Philip. Nobody for the library, huh?
Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar. I second what you're doing and hope you keep it up. We need to do this. A lot of those trees are designated trees on some of the streets. The Fourth, Fifth Avenue streets have special trees that couldn't be trimmed. And so, they are not trimmed for height and consequently, we have the problem. And they're street trees, they're not, they're not citizen trees in 90% of the cases. So, we need to look at our own street trees and they should be lowered and should be trimmed. And I understand that they're beautiful, big trees, but they're a one fire hazard. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. No one else? Okay, so you know, we will bring that back to council. I think Councilman Gardner's made a recommendation. I imagine that most of the council members, if not all, support it. So, I look forward to your recommendations at some point in the future. Thank you, Steve. All right, now we're gonna move on to our last study session item, fluoridation issues. Is there someone giving a staff report on this?
I think Steve Miter, the director of the Utilities Department, is gonna lead off and introduce some folks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just kind of a quick follow-up back on October 9th, we gave our presentation, in fact, of announcement of the water we buy from Metropolitan Water District will have increased fluoride levels starting November 19th. Last week, we did send a flyer in announcing that because that's required by the state. We were asked to put questions and answers that came from that original October 9th meeting on our website. We now have a complete questions and answers, basically all the facts and all the questions and concerns, they're on the website and linked in the flyer, so it's all very detailed. We also, some of the concerns we've heard from our residents, we thought best be answered by the medical community. So, we invited the California Department of Health Services, the consultant to the Department of Health, actually Department of Oral Health. And Dr. Nelson, he's here tonight to actually give about a 20-minute presentation. We also have the audience, Eugene Keguguchi, a doctor, he's a professor, Associate Dean International Professional Legislative Affairs, Director of Advanced Standing Program for International Doctors. He's with the University of Southern California. And John Roth, he's the Executive Director of California General Association. They're also in the audience tonight to help answer questions, should there be any. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Dr. Nelson.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make one comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I really appreciate staff's effort and so as to not overlook any of the concerns of our citizens. You went back into the videotape and compiled all of those questions, put them on our website. And I understand our experts here today will try to weave in response to those questions.
That's correct.
So, thanks for your efforts, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Dave Nelson. I'm a recovering dentist. Just kidding. Just kidding. I decided after a number of years in, in oral and maxillofacial surgery, in which I am boarded, this is my specialty, I decided to get a real job in dental public health, and I get to come do things like this tonight, which is certainly a challenge. I understand at your presentation in October that there were some concerns raised. I hope I can address those concerns and assuage the concerns that you have about community water fluoridation. We've been doing this for over sixty years in the United States, and we're not doing it in a vacuum, so let's, let's move on. I have a couple of things I want to point out to you, and I'll be happy to respond to any questions that you might have. That's my sort of ranking horsepower, and you can see I, I have a dental degree as well as a master's in maxillofacial surgery and a board certified in that specialty. Well, if you want to know why we fluoridate the drinking water in California, this is the reason, ladies and gentlemen. These are two children from your county, okay? They happen to be from the northern part of your county. This child is about four or five years old, and as you can see, every tooth in the child's head is decayed. This is a little older child, once again, from the north part of your county, and you're going to hear from a lady after a while named Mrs. Jo Jass, who runs a program to prevent this very thing. But this is why we fluoridate the drinking water, okay? These children can't come before you and talk to you about how fluoride in the drinking water will, will prevent twenty to forty percent of that, but I can come here. And I think that it's an outrage that in the state of California, we still have kids walking around like that. You think these kids can learn? You think they can sleep at night? You think that they miss a lot of school? You betcha they do. And we have something at our, at our disposal which will reduce that greatly, and I want to talk about that today. And once again, I, I'm not trying to shock anybody here, but when you get a little older and you're a card-carrying senior citizen like I am, you worry about something else called root decay, okay? This is an, obviously, an older patient. You can see practically every area on the root of that person's mouth is decayed. Water fluoridation works more effectively to fight this than it does the decay in children. It's sixty percent effective in reducing the amount of root carries in older people, and anybody in this audience that practices general dentistry will tell you, that's rough to fix. You can't get a filling to stick in that part of the root. And probably seventy-five to eighty percent of our senior citizens, when they get into their seventies and eighties, will exhibit this for one reason or another. Okay, let me talk a little bit about what we're doing here. Let's talk about dental decay in California, because this is, the Surgeon General of the United States calls this a silent epidemic, and it is silent. Like I said, those kids can't come to the city council. But dental decay in California is the number-one health problem for our children. Not obesity, not other diseases such as asthma, it's dental decay. Surprised? This state spends almost a billion dollars a year to repair dental decay, whereas if we fluoridate the drinking water, we could cut that bill practically in half. California's children experience twice the amount of dental decay as their counterparts nationwide. Why do you suppose that is? Because we have twenty-eight point seven percent water fluoridation. Ohio, a hundred percent. Oklahoma, seventy-five percent. New Jersey, forty-some-odd percent. And we're sitting at twenty-five point seven. And that's why our kids are worse off than, than the kids of any other state in the United States except one state. What do you think that state is that's worse off than we are? Arkansas. They have somebody in it. Nice, Councilwoman. It is Arkansas. By third grade, tooth decay affects almost two-thirds of the children in our state, ladies and gentlemen, and more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, three-quarters of a million school-aged children in this state have untreated tooth decay. They're going to school looking like that, and their faces are swollen like this. And we have the means to stop that. Some additional facts, among the school-aged children, low-income and minority children suffer most from dental disease. That's not a surprise, we, we know that. Twenty-eight percent of California's children don't have dental insurance. What happens when you don't have dental insurance? Duh, you don't go to the dentist. And a third of our kids don't have dental insurance. In the United States, over twenty million workdays and fifty-one million school hours were lost due to one thing, dental decay, every year in this country. In a recent survey of twenty-five states, as Councilwoman Gardner guessed or knew, only Arkansas's children are worse off than ours. And of course, the sad thing is that dental carries, which is doc speak for decay, is preventable. Community water fluoridation is the safest, most effective, and most economical public health intervention for reducing tooth decay, period. Well, we want to talk a little bit about the Met, since that's why we're here tonight. The Met voted in two thousand and three to fluoridate its five treatment plants. At that meeting in two thousand and three, there were the six health officers from all the counties that the Met sells water to, and they all stood up as a, as a single person and said, please help us. We have a disease problem on our hands, it's of epidemic proportions, and we can't solve it any other way. And the Met said, fine, we'll do what we can to fluoridate our five treatment plants. And of course, you buy approximately thirty percent of your water from the Met, so you will have some fluoridated water in your system beginning next Monday, actually. The Met has spent billions of dollars to improve its treatment plants and infrastructure to safeguard the public's health. Why would the Met, after spending billions of dollars, you know, jeopardize the health of its customers in any way, shape, or form? The answer, it wouldn't. And from the Governor's Office, the state of California continues to endorse and support efforts to fluoridate the community water supply to help attain the Healthy People twenty thousand ten national objective. That objective is to see that seventy-five percent of the citizens of this country who are on public drinking water are on fluoridated public drinking water. California, as I said, ranks about forty-sixth in the country. We just jumped over New Jersey. We were, as, as recently as nineteen ninety-five, forty-eighth in the United States in the amount of fluoridated water. We're now about forty-sixth with twenty-eight point five percent. That's all going to change when the Met comes online over the next five weeks. We're going to get up there with the other states. And of course, the California Department of Public Health that I represent stands ready to assist you with any scientific and technical expertise that your water people need. That's our job, okay? We have a huge office of drinking water with scientists and technical experts, and any time you need anything from the department, please either give me a call or I'll see that you get the names of the help that you need. And of course, most importantly, a number of the world's most prestigious scientific institutions and agencies continue to support water fluoridation. The American Dental Association does, the Centers for Disease Control, the American Medical Association, the World Health Organization, and over a hundred-and-fifty of the world's most prestigious agencies don't call for a stop to fluoridation, they, they want to continue it. It's the policy of the CDC, to see that America's children get the break they deserve. Well, I hope you got that. Okay, just, just a few more things, because I know this is supposed to be twenty minutes. Like I said in my opening remarks, we've been doing this for sixty-two years. We have over thirty-five-hundred peer-reviewed scientific articles that show that fluoridation is safe, number one, and it's effective, number two, okay? This is the most studied of all the public health interventions, more so than pasteurization of milk, more so than the immunization of your children, more so than the helmet laws, the speed limits. This is the number one as far as looking at an issue and vetting the issue scientifically. Sixty-seven percent of the United States population drinks fluoridated water right now. And of course, the powerful thing that the Met can be congratulated for, there will be millions of California children who will grow up cavity-free and pain-free because of a decision that the Met made in two thousand and three, and the California Public Health, Department of Public Health applauds that decision. Well, not everybody's happy with fluoride. This is America, everybody's entitled to an opinion. I know you've heard some of these things, so let me concentrate for a couple of minutes on some of the things you may have heard about water fluoridation, and we'll see if they're true or not true, or maybe partially true. If you Google fluoridation, you're not going to get the CDC, and you're not going to get the ADA. You're going to get nofluoride.com, you're going to get the Keepers of the Well, you're going to get the Fluoride Action Network, and these are all people that are vehemently opposed to community water fluoridation, and that's okay. The four things that this particular website brings out is, number one, they'll tell you that the American Medical Association is not willing to state that fluoride will harm no one. Well, of course not. The American Medical Association wouldn't say that about aspirin or anything else. They don't make guarantees that something is one-hundred percent safe, and certainly fluoride is not. Here's a popular one, don't put fluoride in the water, it's not FDA-approved, right? Right. It never will be FDA-approved. It's not under the purview of the FDA to approve community water fluoridation. They don't regulate drinking water. They regulate bottled water and toothpaste, okay? The EPA has the responsibility for drinking water. So when people tell you, this is an FDA, this is a drug that's not FDA-approved, number one, it isn't a drug, and number two, it never will be FDA-approved, they'll talk about forced medication or the mass medication of the public. You're forcing me to drink something I don't want to drink, right? No. It's no more so medication than, than immunization of your kids, helmets, iodine and salt, vitamin D in milk, and fluoride isn't a medicine. It's a naturally occurring element that's in your water already. I don't know what the level is, but I bet some of my colleagues do. All we're going to do is optimize that level to a level that will, that will reduce dental decay by somewhere between twenty and forty percent. So we're not talking about a medicine here. And the other thing this website brings out is the chemicals are not pharmaceutical quality. They don't have to be pharmaceutical quality. As long as they pass the NSF standard sixty, that's all that's required in the state of California. By the way, I printed for you guys something that talks about flucelsolic acid. I'm sure you heard from the opposition that flucelsolic acid was bad and it'd never been studied for safety and yada, yada. It doesn't have to be. As long as it passes NSF standard sixty, that meets the requirement for this state and for forty-eight other states. So I would like for you to read this. It's from CDC. It's all you want to know about flucelsolic acid and more. It talks about where it comes from, its side effects, et cetera, et cetera, and I think it will assuage some of your concerns about the material that we actually use to fluoridate. Here's another website, Keepers of the Well, they claim a whole bunch of things. The EPA unions called for a moratorium, a few of them did, nothing's happened there. They claim that the chemical contains arsenic and lead. That's true. Yes, it does. What they don't tell you is it's in such minute amounts that you literally can't measure it. It's in parts per billion, okay? The California maximum contaminant level for arsenic and lead is in parts per million. This is a derivation probably a thousand times more diluted than that, but you won't hear that. They blame all sorts of diseases on fluoridated water, hyperactivity and Alzheimer's and kidney disease, and we're already overdosed on fluoride from foods and beverages that we get right now. I don't think so. The CDC certainly looks at things like that. When we calculate the dosage that we're going to put in your drinking water, we calculate, taking in mind that you do get fluoride from foods and beverages and tea and toothpaste and other things. That's all calculated into the equation that says, for this area with this temperature, point eight parts per million is ideal for cavity reduction. Well, just a, a couple of other sort of myths and then the real truth. They will bring up to you that fluoridation causes cancer in young boys. Actually, that's not true. This is a Harvard study by a postdoctoral dentist named Dr. Elise Bassin. She mentions herself that she didn't control for a number of things, okay? And she cautions people when they read this study, that's not a peer-reviewed study that one should draw conclusions from nor change public policy from. There was a, a weak link between osteosarcoma and a couple of young boys. She didn't study young girls, but the most important thing that you won't hear from the anti-fluoride people is that this is part one of a two-part study. The second part has not been published yet, indeed, has not been peer-reviewed yet, but early indications are, the second part of that study does not show the same relationship between osteosarcoma, which is a deadly cancer, and fluoridated drinking water. So wait for part two. As we said, yeah, there are harmful contaminants in, in the fluoride chemicals. We've talked about exposure. We're using, this is a, a charge that we often hear, we're using industrial-grade chemicals. Well, all chemicals used in treating water are industrial-grade. I don't know if you know this or not, there are probably twelve to sixteen different chemicals in your water, and they're all industrial-grade chemicals. They don't have to be pharmaceutical pure. It doesn't matter what form the fluoride ion is delivered in, whether it's in powder, whether it's in acid, fluoride is fluoride is fluoride. We're looking to get that ion impregnated into the enamel matrix of the tooth to make it resistant to the acid that's formed when bacteria that are in your mouth work on your food. That's what it's all about. Bacteria, food, acid, eats a hole in the tooth, cavity, get it filled. And of course, fluoride is the thing that reduces that. Fluoride causes rampant fluorosis, not true. The anti-fluoride people claim that the rate's around sixty percent. The reality's more like twenty percent. And if you ask dentists, and we can, we have some in the audience, you can ask them, they'll tell you they rarely ever see fluorosis. Is someone in the audience that has more technical expertise than I do? Oh, good, thank you. Some more charges that you'll hear, fluoridation's wasteful because only a tiny portion goes for human consumption. Well, yeah, you know, we use water for watering lawns and washing cars and things. You can't, you can't take the piece out that's just going to help people. I mean, all the other stuff that you put in water to make it pure and make it palatable is also on your lawn and on your car, so it's no more wasteful than the other water additives that you add to your water. Fluoridation's going to kill all my fish. You'd be surprised, I hear this a lot. I doubt that because seawater is one-point-two to one-point-five parts per million naturally. So, didn't hurt my salmon I had last night, I'll tell you that. Fluoridation is compulsory mass medication. It's neither compulsory. You can use bottled water without fluoride if you don't want to drink it. It's not a medicine, it's the adjustment of a naturally occurring element, and of course, if you don't want it in your house, you can put a reverse osmosis filter on the water line into your house and remove the fluoride along with the manganese and all the other hard elements that are in water. So you do have a choice. Finally, this is an issue that resonates with policymakers a lot. The anti-fluoride contingent will tell you that the American Dental Association has issued a warning, 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 don't mix baby formula with fluoridated water. That's not quite true. That's not what the ADA said. And we have in the audience Dr. Jean Sekaguchi, he was a former president of the American Dental Association, I think he'll clarify this. What the American Dental Association said was, they issued interim guidelines, they've never issued anything called a warning. And what they said was, if you have to constitute, reconstitute powdered baby formula, please try to reconstitute it with non-fluoridated tap water. That's all they said. Why? Because of the danger of fluorosis, the modeling, the gray spots, the modeling of the teeth. That's what the American Dental Association did. They never said, warning, 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 don't do that. The worst that can happen is that you'll get some mild fluorosis, usually detectable only by a dentist, in the permanent teeth. So it's really sort of a risk-benefit situation. So the take-home message, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, community water fluoridation is safe. We've been looking at this for sixty years. We've got thousands and thousands of studies that show that. It's effective, it reduces decay twenty to forty percent, sixty percent in seniors in the root decay area. It's really economical. It costs between fifty cents a person to three dollars a person a year. So you can get a, with a, with a fluoridation, you can get a lifetime of protection for less than the cost of a single dental filling. And we have John Roth from the California Dental Association who will tell you that. Here's some more endorsements. You remember this guy, David Satcher, former Surgeon General of the United States. Every Surgeon General for the past fifty-five years has endorsed community water fluoridation. See Everett Coop, the single most important commitment a community can make to the oral health of its children. Pretty strong statement in my books. And a couple of other things, fluoride receives a clean bill of health. This is the British Medical Journal recently. People will tell you that they're defluoridating Europe right and left. No, they're not. They just have different delivery systems. They fluoridate their salt in Switzerland and they fluor, in the cantonment of basil. They fluoridate salt in Mexico. Meanwhile, my slides are getting away from me here. I don't think the National Cancer Institute would endorse water fluoridation if they were afraid it causes cancer. Researchers saw no indication of a cancer risk associated. Remember, folks, this is all about dosage, dosage, dosage. You know, I can poison you with plain water if you drink enough of it. Some gal did that in Sacramento and died this past year. She was in a water drinking contest. And a lot of people will say, well, I'm allergic to fluoride. I know, I'm allergic to it. If it gets on my skin, I'll break out in hives. Once again, the American Academy of Asthma, Allergy and Immunology says there's no danger of that in the dose that's used for community water fluoridation. And finally, from the Director of the California Department of Public Health, who is your former health officer here in Orange County, as the Director of the California Department of Public Health and former health officer for Orange County, I commend the Metropolitan Water District for its water fluoridation program. Fluoridated water is a time-tested method for safely delivering oral health to all sectors of the community. Water fluoridation has led to a significant reduction in tooth decay, thereby preventing cases of tooth loss and chronic pain, and significantly reducing healthcare costs. I am very pleased that the Met is undertaking this important public health action. Signed, Mark B. Horton, M.D., MSPH, the state's number-one health officer and your former health officer. So, if you don't have any teeth, you don't need to worry about this. If you've got teeth, you need to get some fluoride. Thank you very much for allowing me to appear before you, ladies and gentlemen. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can. If I can't, I'll find someone that can. We do have some other people who want to make public comments, so I'll sit down. We do have some other people who want to make public comments, so I'll sit down.
Well, don't sit down yet, Dr. Nelson. Don't sit down yet.
Okay, all right. I have a couple of questions.
Councilman Gardner.
One of the concerns we've heard expressed is this issue of absorption, that we have children swimming in pools with fluoridated water, taking baths with fluoridated water.
Right. To my knowledge, and I am not a dermatologist, but to my knowledge fluoride does not, you don't absorb fluoride through the skin. It does not happen. I've never read anything in the world literature, and I've read a lot of the world literature in the past 10 years since I took this job. I am not aware that fluoride passes through the skin and into the system. And if it did, probably in such small quantities that you would never know it. It's not an issue that's ever been brought up before. So I'm not aware that it does that.
Councilman Hen.
If the health, the beneficial health effects of fluoridation are so thoroughly and well-established, why isn't that the, that European countries, for example, haven't really universally or nearly universally or are trying to universally adopt fluoridation of their water supplies?
I think there are a couple of reasons. Number one, and the main reason, in Europe, they have different delivery systems. Let's look at the city of Sacramento, for instance. We have two great rivers, and we take some water out of this river and some water out of that river. We run it through a single treatment plant. The fluoride injectors are right there. We test it as it goes downstream, so we know exactly what the dose is. Relatively simple. In Europe, usually you have very small delivery systems, a lot of water wells and things like that. It does not make any sense at all to fluoridate using small wells at $85,000 to $100,000 a fluoridator each wellhead. They don't have the great big treatment plants that we have here. For instance, the water that supplies your areas from the Deemer Plant, that's a huge treatment plant of the Met's. And they can put the fluoride in, test it, mix it, measure it, and send it downstream at the right concentration. They don't do that in Europe. Some of the countries in Europe, as I said, Switzerland, they fluoridate the salt. There are some countries that, for whatever reason, have decided they don't want fluoride. And those countries are the ones that usually have universal healthcare. They don't need to worry about preventing dental decay because everybody gets the best care possible. I will tell you that Ireland's almost 100% fluoridated. Great Britain is about 90% fluoridated. So when people tell you that Europe is busy defluoridating, they're not. They just deliver it in a different way.
Any further questions, counsel? Okay, thank you, Dr. Nelson.
Could we?
Who's next up?
Are you going to have any other present, formal presentations?
Good afternoon. I'm Jean Sekuguchi. As you mentioned, from USC, but also former president of California Dental Association and the American Dental Association. I just come up here just because I've been through so many of these situations and can testify that the antis are immune to every one of these events. And their testimony obviously should be public record. But you will also find, if you do any research at all, that their material is not jury scientific research. And I believe in doing what's right. And I believe that fluoridation is key to doing what's right for our children and for our people. And so I just want to get it on the record. It's totally safe. The risk benefit ratio is probably a million to one. And I think you could probably win Lotto with those kind of odds. So I, you know, I think it's absolutely something that should be done and is needed by our people. You have fluoridated water naturally here, and you're just adding more water, not fluoridation, because the concentrations are roughly the same. I really feel that in this situation here, you have a tremendous opportunity because, you know, right now you're doing half a job. Why not do the rest of it? And just to respond to the Europe question, Honorable Councilman Hen. In Europe, the EU has decreed that they support fluoridation for all the countries in Europe. It's true what Dr. Nelson mentioned, that some countries have chosen not to. In the Eastern Bloc countries, which are part of the EU, they've chosen not to because most of their equipment is old, obsolete, and not very functional. So obviously, it's safer not to do anything. And as far as fluorosis, I've been practicing dentist since 1974. And you know what? I have to wear loops, which magnify five times, to be able to see the effects of fluorosis when I've seen it. I teach at school. We see, when I'm on the floor teaching, I probably see maybe 150 patients in the afternoon. And it's probably once a year that I might see a tiny bit of fluorosis. So it's not a major issue. Fluorosis is something that we can tout because it sounds like a disease. And I also want to add to those that think that hydrofluoric salicytic acid is dangerous because of an acid. All of you drink soda pop. So, okay, maybe you don't. But soda pop is carbonic acid. Okay, that's how the bubbles show up. And then speaking about chemicals in the water, the chemical that you absolutely need to purify water is chlorine. And that's exactly the same elemental group called halogens that chlorine is from. So I think that you could sort of see, you know, what, yeah, it's about magnification of differences. But in reality, it is completely safe, effective, and very much worth the cost and virtually no risk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, gentlemen? No? Okay. Is there any further expert commentary?
I'm Jo Jass, and I am the director of the Seals on Wheels Dental Program, which is a division of Healthy Smiles from Orange County, for Orange County Kids. And our program goes into the elementary schools in Orange County, preschool and elementary. We see, do dental screening for approximately 7,000 children annually. Out of those 7,000 in our income level that we see, which is the lower-income schools, 3,500 annually are identified with untreated tooth decay. Many of them are very serious, just like the pictures that Dr. Nelson showed you. At Healthy Smiles, in the Smile Center, we see at least 12 children monthly that have to be sedated under general anesthesia to repair their tooth decay. These are small children, anywhere from three years old and up. The schools, three of the schools that I service are within a five-minute drive of this building. The kids are needy. Trying to treat these children after the fact is almost impossible. The cost is just exorbitant. Many of them end up in the emergency rooms, costing all of us a lot of money. So fluoridation has been proven to be safe and effective, and it really, really will help our kids in Orange County. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have a question, Nancy? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Roth. I'm the executive director of the California Dental Association Foundation. I don't recall if I saw it on the last broadcast of when the issue was discussed before you or if it was later in the local newspaper. But I just wanted to clarify in this statement that the California Dental Association does support community water fluoridation, and we do represent the profession of dentistry in the state. 24,000 members of the California Dental Association support this policy. They have for decades, as well as the American Dental Association has supported water fluoridation since 1950. It's a safe, effective, and economical way to benefit your residents, just like the residents up the freeway and down the freeway and across the freeway benefit from it as well. The other point I wanted to make is that there is a wonderful resource that I hope you would take the time to access. It's called Fluoridation Facts. It's published by the American Dental Association, can be accessed online at ada.org/go-to/fluoride. And it has 356 scientific references to the issue of fluoridation and talks about the top questions and answers in regards to the issue. And so I encourage you to seek out that information as credible, science-based information on the subject to help satisfy any concerns that might linger. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Paul Rijardot. I'm a pediatric dentist. I practice in Huntington Beach. We've had the practice there since 1975. And I see children not only from Huntington Beach and Fountain Valley, that's a community water supply is fluoridated, but I see kids from Huntington Beach and from Newport Beach and other areas. That I'm also past president of the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry. I'm a past president of the California Society of Pediatric Dentistry. I'm a associate, excuse me, assistant clinical professor of pediatric dentistry at USC, where I work in our residency training programs. And I'm a member of the CHOC medical staff and CHOC dental staff, where I treat children under general anesthesia. I also am an attending dentist with our residency program at CHOC. But I'm speaking to you, not from those hats, but from my hat as a practitioner in Orange County and someone with 30, 35 years' experience working with kids. As you're probably aware and as they've made clear, fluoride is not a vaccine that's going to wipe out decay. It's not going to, like vaccine wiped out polio. What fluoride does is, community fluoridation will reduce the incidence of decay in children between 20 and 40%. That means as a practitioner, that I'm going to see less kids with dental decay. I'm going to see less kids that need treatment. I'm going to see less kids with the severity of the conditions that you saw earlier. I'm going to see kids, because their teeth are stronger, that if they're going to be affected by decay, they're going to be affected at a later age. They're going to be older. And they're going to be much more capable of coping with the dental treatment procedures that are necessary to treat this disease. I'm going to see more kids that never have decay and are cavity-free. And that's the basis on which I would encourage you to move forward with this without any hesitation, that I can take you down with me to school, and I can bring you on the floor as we're training our residents. And that's not going to help you a bit in making a decision as to what you want to do in going forward. I can bring you up to the library at USC, and we can sit there and go through the articles, and you've seen some of the science. And I don't think that really is going to help you make the decision you have to make. But if I bring you into my office and you spend a day with me, as I'm working on little kids, and you look in their eyes when they need an injection and they need dental treatment that otherwise might have been prevented. And if you have to look in the parents' eyes, as I do, when I come out of general anesthesia after two hours of treating their kids, and I say to them, "Your child's fine," and you look in their eyes, you would not have a very difficult time making the decision you're going to have to make. Yes, I'd be happy to answer questions.
What kinds of dental problems do you see in children today?
The ones we're talking about now is dental decay, which leads to dental infections, dental abscesses, and those type of things. We also see other conditions also. But we're talking about here, when I'm talking about dental disease now, I'm speaking in the context of what you're calling dental decay, what we call dental carries.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Mungo. I'm a pediatric dentist as well. And Dr. Rijardot and I know each other well. And we are the two that are in the trenches, day-to-day, working with the children. What we see and what we see happening is devastating. Orange County has more dental problems, if we talk about strictly dental carries, than the state of California, the average of California. So here we are in Orange County, our own county, and things are worse than the rest of California. And it's been spoken before as to how bad California is, as far as the oral health goes. So as a past president in the California Society of Pediatric Dentistry, as a district trustee for our American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry, we certainly see the global aspect of these things. But I come to you today as a pediatric dentist and also as your neighbor. I live about a stone's throw from down the street here. And so I brought up my children in Newport Beach. And so I have a great affection for the city. And what we are looking at is really taking science, like you've heard today, we've heard hearsay, innuendos, and really, you know, all dentists, all physicians, nurses, and registered dental hygienists are scientists. So we do all day is science. In order to take the scientific information you've been given, it takes a little bit of a scientific background to sort of sort these things out. It's a hard sell. Hearsay is an easy sell because it plays on emotions. But what we're talking about here are the facts. And what we have to remember is, we have to use, as leaders, we have to use one thing that's been sort of short in our nation for a long time, and that's common sense. Philip Howard wrote a wonderful book in 1994 called The Death of Common Sense. And that really spelled out what was happening in America. We forget to sit back sometimes and look at the picture. When we see 67% of the United States is fluoridated, and the children are doing so much better than what we see here, common sense tells us this is a win-win situation for everyone. This is all about the children. We are here in the name of the children. Dr. Rijardot and I see children every day. I'm at Hoag Hospital on Fridays in the operating room with children from 18 months of age to 14 years of age. And just as Paul said, we get in there and it is ever so devastating to the parents as if it was a heart transplant. And I know that sounds silly, but it really is devastating because we're in a hospital, it's general anesthesia, there are risks involved. So what is the name of the game? The name of the game is prevention. We don't want to be there with these children. So in finishing up, I'd like to say that putting two to three drops of fluoride in the 40 or 50 gallons of water is not something you should be afraid of. What we should be afraid of is not offering our children the very best oral health that they can have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other expert-type people to testify? Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment now. Come on down, Laura. I would like to say I'm quite pleased with the caliber of the folks here that are trying to educate us on this process. I never expected to get former heads of the American Dental Association or the California Dental Association or some of the other associations that are represented here. So my hat's off to the staff for arranging this for us.
I think, Mr. Mayor, you've probably set a record for the most dentists in council chambers at one time.
I think so. My teeth are aching just listening to all this. I know, there you go.
Good afternoon again, Laura Dietz, Coronel Omar. I became intrigued by this topic when it was raised, and I spent some time talking to my own dentist about it, graduate of the USC School of Dentistry. And he made me very aware that the ADA was very keen on pushing, shall we say, a completion in fluoridation and so on. I have actually took one point and one question. The point is that there are multiple ways to prevent tooth decay, and none of these presentations have I heard that. So I hope that the industry representatives here and the good doctors will also, when they're treating their patients, review the other options to prevent tooth decay in the first place. Second, I also assume that the higher rates here in Orange County are quite possibly due to the growing Latino and possibly Asian communities that we have. And so the rates are going up because their birth rates are higher. My question has to do with which fluoride. I assume, though I do not know, but I'd like the answer, there are multiple types of fluorides. There isn't just one out there. This is America. We have multiple brands of fluoride. I'd really appreciate the Met and whoever wishes to, to address the quality control issues of the material that they wish to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Why don't we get all the public comments, and then maybe someone can keep track of these questions, and we'll just do it all in one shot. Before you start, how many people want to speak on this matter? Okay, I see about one, two, three, four, five hands. What, are they getting five minutes each or three minutes each? Oh, on agenda items. Okay. Because we are going to be concluding at 5:30. I just want everybody to know that.
My name is Philip Cutler, and I have some questions for the dentists and other authorities that we have here. And the first question is, what about all these kids that, when they show these pictures of the tooth decay and everything, maybe those kids just sucked on orange juice when they were kids? Maybe when they were practically infants, the mothers gave them acidic drinks or whatever it was, and that rotted their teeth. So I don't think we can necessarily attribute all this to a fluoride deficiency. The other question is, why didn't they show any pictures about dental fluorosis? They were pretty horrible, too. I didn't see any pictures that actually showed the modeling of the teeth, the crumbling of the teeth, and all the rest of it that can be associated with dental fluorosis. And do we, I didn't hear them talk about any long-term studies. Everything was basically about children and whatnot. What happens in the long term when the fluoride, which is stored in the bones, basically, as well as some is in the teeth and whatnot, of course, kind of like bone-like tissue? We have hip fractures, records that show that there's increase of hip fractures where people have been fluoridated. And brain damage. There's thyroid problems. Doctors actually used fluoridation in Europe to slow down a fast thyroid. So it certainly affects the thyroid gland. I don't hear anything about those kind of effects. What about the, I think the first speaker who used the slides a lot, he mentioned that in regard to Councilwoman Gardner's question about absorption through the skin. He said that he didn't know of any data showing any absorption through the skin. Well, I'm not a scientist, but I would see, but I do remember something about my high school chemistry. And I think I have a little of the common sense that the gentleman that spoke last was referring to. Turns out that fluoride is probably the most active member of the halogen family. That's like iodine, chlorine, and fluorine, and maybe it is... That's like iodine, chlorine and fluorine and maybe there's a bromine. I don't know all of them, but in any event, fluorine is the most active. Now, if you take iodine and if somebody is iodine deficient and you smear some of it on their skin, and that's one of the tests that they sometimes use for iodine deficiency, you will actually see the color fade quite rapidly. If a person has plenty of iodine in their system, it will not be absorbed that rapidly. And since fluorine is far more reactive than iodine, I would expect that it would most certainly be something that can be absorbed through the skin. And if this can be refuted in some way by one of the dentists or whatever, that would be fine. Just the discussion that we've been hearing is essentially restricted to children's teeth. Well, what about adults and older adults, as I mentioned, with the hip fractures, with the brain damage and whatever else, and the thyroid problems, which can affect a multiplicity of body functions? The thyroid is the master gland of the body. We have an epidemic of obesity. Well, it turns out that the fluorides, and I can't say that this is a fact, but I'm using a little common sense to indicate that this might be a possibility and the fact that fluorides were used to slow down the thyroid. Do you have a slow thyroid? You're going to be more inclined to being obese. You're going to be more inclined to having heart problems. You're going to be more inclined to having brain problems. So there's a link there that needs to be explored. I haven't heard anything about that. And they said that it's a thousand times less predominant in water than it is the lead and arsenic and whatnot. That may be, I don't know. I'm questioning this because there are some parts of this country where fluoride is very prominent, parts of Texas, for example, Oklahoma, and they suffer from dental fluorosis in those areas. And another thing, how are you really going to control? They talk about adjusting the water for the temperature in this area and all that kind of stuff. But there's many other sources of fluoride. You can get it through foods that you eat. Suppose a woman's boiling some soup or something like that. What do you think's going to happen to the fluoride concentration in the soup as the water evaporates or whatever? She might be feeding her family a rather hefty dose of fluoride.
You almost answered, your time is up.
They get more time?
You have five minutes, sir. We have other people that'd like to speak and we're going to be done here at 5:30.
Can I come back?
No, you get one shot. Five minutes.
Well, I was certain we urged that we exercise some critical thinking functions because maybe one of the side effects of fluoridation is that it hampers our critical thinking.
Thank you, sir. Come on, Larry, you know you're itching to get up here.
It's my turn, Steve. Okay.
This time I want you to leave my toothpaste for me. You keep bringing it here. You keep teasing us with the toothpaste, but you never leave us any.
I am showing you the toothpaste. Let me get set up here, you guys. This stuff.
Come on, Larry.
Larry Porter, I live up in Newport Heights. I find it incredible that we're even listening to this Dr. Nelson fellow and to realize, yes, is that how he's paying all his bills? Is coming and just regurgitating what has already been said by those who want to promote this addition of this hydrofluorosilic acid to our water, which is a hazardous waste byproduct of the phosphate mining industry? And it hasn't come out how much money they save. When we talk about fluorine, it is number nine in the periodic table of elements. That means it is super-duper small. It's a lot smaller than chlorine. And its ability to go through very fine, tiny membranes in the cell or other parts of the body are very great because physically it is really small. Dr. Nelson, is he a chemist? Has this even been addressed? Now, in regards to medication, I happened to go up to the pharmacy just the other day and I went up and I said, "Well, I'd like to buy some fluoride." And how can I get it? Can I get some pills? Or does it come some other way? And they said, "Well, it comes as a liquid and it comes in pills, but you need a prescription." Now, I, you guys, we're not fools. To get a controlled substance, to get a medication, you need a prescription. And to try and say dosing our water supply with fluoride is not medicating. It's just, I don't see how this, he can come up here and say these kinds of things in front of us. They don't live here. They come from afar and who are these people? And the truth is, you saw the toothpaste. Under six years old, one toothbrush full, a little bit more, go to the hospital, the poison control center immediately. The American Pediatrics Association, I believe this is true, that kids do not use fluoridated water to mix the formula. So on one hand, it's saying, "This is gnarly stuff." On the other hand, they're trying to say one size fits all for infants and old people and infirm people and it's all okay? Give me a break. Please. And at the 11th hour, the dog and pony show, it shows up with all of this stuff. Why didn't this happen before to bring this all out just at the very last moment when a decision is to be made? This isn't a way to deal with public policy for, it just isn't. Something, there's a rat here. There's a big, ginormous rat. And for God's sakes, waiting and really coming to grips with what this really is is better for all of us. There is no rush. You guys read the material safety data sheet on this hydrofluorosilic acid. You saw that every page. It said, "Don't get near me. Don't touch me. Don't get me near your eyes. Don't breathe me because I'll play silly buggers with you. I'll make you really, really, really sorry." You saw the admonition on the last page with the manufacturer. He says, "No guarantees, no nothing. It's yours." Who is indemnifying who? Who's going to be responsible if somebody in our population happens to be such that this fluoride plays big silly buggers with them? Who's going to come to the party and help them out? The mayor is saying, "My time's up and I thank you. Please, please wait, please."
Thank you, Larry. I would like to point out that no decision is being made here tonight. This is informational only.
Yes.
The decision has been made by MWD to fluoridate the water. We purchased water from MWD, but we're not in a position at this point to give up 25 or 30% of our water supply. So, thank you, Larry.
I'd also like to add that thanks to Councilwoman Daigle's efforts, she and I went up and did meet with the Met and covered a lot of these areas. I did ask for a delay and we didn't get our letter, but we were basically assured that we would not get the delay, that there were other cities asking for it, clamoring for it to come on board. So that just brings you up to date as far as the Met's position.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and thank you again for your repeated efforts in having tried and gone to such a degree in your links. Very quickly, in the last gentleman's comment about this all being here so quickly and not being able to respond to it well, I'm just going to just roughly go through some things that came to mind while I was listening. I'm a physical therapist and from the allied health field, I've had some science in my background and it's really interesting to me to see when a slick presentation comes by and it's like, "Oh, and this dentist and this doctor said this, blah, blah, blah." That's science. Everything else is hearsay. It's really insulting, I think, to the average person, let alone somebody with some science in their background. We've had different dentists. The first evening here, we had a dentist affiliated with the ADA in doing the research. They talked to us. We've had doctors here and endocrinologists from Hoag Hospital. Several people have said, with the same kind of credentials and so on, I'm feeling the opposite side of the conditions that were presented. Again, they showed the poor children and they keep talking about the poor children and I understand that and I think that it would be an absolutely wonderful thing for these pediatric dentists to maybe have a facility where the people who want to give their fluoride could work with those associations, where people could go there and get some assistance. That would be great. But like the first dentist said when he was here, having fluoride in the water to prevent dental carries was like sunblock, drinking it in order to prevent a sunburn. And it really does seem that loose to me. And they said, the CDC said nothing about it. And if you notice the other day in the paper, there was a great article where the woman quoted several things where the CDC was not in favor of fluoride or talking about some things that were unfavorable about it. I think the toothpaste warnings, which will bring a smile, are pretty significant of what fluoride can do. And it talks about the EPA is responsible for our water. And the EPA are the very people who have pulled off, how many times are pulling things off the market that the last thing that I can think of was with the strawberries and tomatoes because it's actually a neurotoxin that they've been spraying them with. So now they're coming up with a new one, which five Nobel Peace Prize people have said are dangerous and that they said, "Well, we're going to try it for a year and see what happens." These things aren't seen overnight. That is true science, seeing what long-term effects are, not that we didn't drop Dejmar or we weren't all comatose the next day or we're all communist the next day. It's really pathetic, some of the journalism and comments, I think, on this, very lacking in balance, common sense. One of the things about it having arsenic and lead in it, I think that one of the things, not only does it have it, but it also was pointed out to us that it actually draws. And that's where in some of the poor neighborhoods, these kids are going to be at more risk because their plumbing isn't proper and it can draw more arsenic and lead out of the plumbing, we've been told and so on. I think those are things that have to be looked at. Maybe they can invent lollipops, popsicles. I think it was absolutely brilliant to hear about the salt. I hadn't heard about that before, but it's giving people a choice. As I said, my son, just a return from Iraq, which you can greatly appreciate, and he said, "We were fighting for liberty and choice and democracy and that is being violated and you're told you have to take something that is against your will." But if it's in salt, no wonder Europe is changing because the people were protesting it so strongly that then they have found other ways that if you want to have it, you can. You can salt your food or whatever. And I think it's also very important to look at the expense of the removing water by reverse osmosis. Talking to some experts, they say it only removes about 80% of it. And then the problem with that is, I think it's really very inconsiderate to say that you can just put it at your pipe at the front of the house, which would cost probably $8,000 to $10,000 and have to be regularly changed with your filters and stuff to be doing your property. I don't think that that's fair choice. And reverse osmosis uses twice as much water while we're in a drought. It's not a good idea to be using twice as much water. I think that's, that's not right. Maybe my odds are one in a million, I'm not a gambler. I want to make choices that are responsible to my understanding and go from there. I think that's about it. I would really appreciate a copy of that, and I'm not even good at pronouncing it, the fluorosilic acid treatment and how it is, because what I'm curious about is how is, what form does it go into the water? Because I understand that makes a difference of what water systems, thank you so much.
May I, could you state your name for the record? Your time is up.
Blythe Fair, Coronet Omar.
Thank you, Ms. Fair.
The last thing is, is will active alumina remove it? Thank you.
Something that one of our experts might want to comment on in looking at the ADA fact sheet, I noticed that they said not only reverse osmosis, but distillation and then activated carbon filters remove fluoride. So you might want to comment on that.
Yes, for the record, I was here in your last hearing on this issue. My name is Jeff Green. I'm the National Director for Citizens for Safe Drinking Water. It's really difficult in five minutes to basically relate to everything it said in 30 minutes or 40 minutes, and so I'm not going to attempt to do that. I am going to say this, if you can read, you'll know that fluoride has not reduced the epidemics of dental decay in all the fluoridated communities. If you can read. It's uncovered stories on all kinds of fluoridated communities across the nation. So if you buy into this without checking it out for yourself, I think that it's a little bit silly. Second part of it is that we saw pictures of baby bottle tooth decay. That's what they're describing. It's now called early childhood carries, but baby bottle tooth decay comes because of the child being exposed to what they call an acid challenge, meaning that there was something that was placed in the mouth for too long of a time period. That doesn't go away because you put fluoride in the water. Those baby bottle tooth decays are happening in every community in the United States. It's certainly true that it's the lowest income people in many cases because they use baby bottles of one type or another to babysit their children. And so that becomes an educational problem, not something that you can resolve by putting fluoride in water. I got to go almost straight to something because I think that's still the key to most of it. I don't expect it and I don't think you should have to believe me and under the willingness that you have to believe someone else without the information is, I think, ignorant. I really do think it's ignorant for you to trust in someone else's decision when they can't produce something for you. There's a statement that said that there were 3,500 studies. Then show the one study on hydrofluosilic acid on long-term effects. It's been put in the water for 60 years and we don't have one study. It's unfathomable that anybody normally who doesn't have an agenda on this item would say that that's reasonable. For the amount of money that it costs to beat people into submission to put fluoride in their water, they could have done the study a long time ago. Why isn't the study there? And that's basically what we've asked that you do. Not that you go to Metropolitan Water District and say, "Oh, by the way, I want you to rethink the whole public policy." It shows the study on the substance because you must have certainly looked at that before you made a decision that you're going to fluoridate 18 million people. I mean, it's silly. The second thing is, is there any chemical manufacturer that'll say the same thing that someone else is saying about the product? They're telling you it's perfectly safe. Nobody's going to say it's perfectly safe. But will a chemical manufacturer say that it is effective at reducing tooth decay when you swallow it at the same rates that you're going to put it in the water? And if they won't say that, then who is saying that it's effective? And the second thing is, is it safe for infants? Is it safe for children? Is it safe for the elderly? Is it safe for those people who have existing ailments? The fact that no chemical manufacturer of hydrofluosilic acid will say that should be an indication that something's not on the up and up. The fact that basically somebody would say, "Well, what," so what it comes down to me is, since when is an endorsement a substitute for science? And I believe that you, as a council representing people in your community, have known with the right, and I happen to believe the duty and you may disagree with that, but I believe you have both the right and the duty to ask for that specific information, to do the due diligence or require that someone else perform the due diligence. We've sent you a notification that the actual chemical manufacturers have not met all of the standards that are necessary in order for them to be certified. Are they certified? Yes, they are. Are they being certified without following through with the requirements of standard 60? According to NSF, under oath and to Congress, in both cases, they've said, "No chemical manufacturer has done that." I think that's an easy question. We've sent you a sample that came from Kilkipsie, New York, that went to Solvay, their particular supplier, and they told them, "Go talk to the CDC." I just have to say, and I'll repeat because I think we've talked about this before, if you had a recreation building that was putting up in here and someone in the chain of delivery told you that the cement that was going to be placed in this building wasn't going to be, it was deficient and it did not meet the standards that they're supposed to meet, I think everybody would find you negligent if you didn't actually demand that you saw something to prove that. I don't think you have to believe the person, but I think that you have to demand for the evidence to show that it actually was, does meet and is not deficient in some way. And that's what we're suggesting to you. The figures that you see in here when you talk about 20 to 40% tooth decay, I think what you'll find is that when Dr. Nelson was under, at testimony under deposition and he was asked a very specific question, "Did any of the studies that you relied upon, did they evaluate how much water a person drank?" And he said he didn't think that that was relevant. Second of all, he said, "Well, you know, so did they drink the tap water? Was that one of the things that the studies, that you relied on?" No. I don't know of any studies where they did that. Did you evaluate the fluoride exposure from all the other sources? In other words, in these studies that he relied upon in making a statement? The answer was no. And I happen to think that in that particular case, what this means is, you, I mean, certainly you're a you're a body, and I'm finishing up here, that you're a body that specifically has the authority to be able to weigh evidence. But to ignore the fact that there is no real evidence in front of you, other than statements from someone, the World Health Organization, the American Dental Association, American Medical Association, the fact that they may endorse this, have them send you the study. They must have the study. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I've since had a win, sort of. We had a anti-fluoride adoption, the CRA, in California unanimously. So, that wasn't bad. I'd like to address a little bit, we talked about the children and dental fluorosis.
Dick, you might want to explain what CRA is.
Oh, CRA is the California Republican Assembly, and it's a conservative side of the Republican Party, if you will. And they had a convention to determine that Mitt Romney would be the person we're supposed to support, and I'm not too hot about that, but nevertheless, we had a convention and did not win everything there. I better quit.
Quit while you're ahead, Dick.
Okay. The ADA did ask that kids under two should stay away from fluoride. And if you're nursing, well, they said if you should be nursing and are not, you're mixing with a formula, you definitely should use no fluorides in the water, and no fluorides in the water until the child is two. So, my goodness, here's some group that's saying, "Golly, we've got to have fluorides to get those teeth right," except, "Don't use them while you're nursing." And nursing, incidentally, the breast milk has only .01 milligram per liter, or one hundredth of what they're saying to put in the water. So, basically, they've come back a long ways right there. The next thing they say is that no child under seven should use fluoridated toothpaste unless they're controlled, and they shouldn't use more than a P, a P size. You can't use, you just can't put it on, because that's what leads to the calling a doctor. You could have a health effect from that. So, basically, now we've got kids up to age seven that we're controlling, and now they've also said that topical application of fluoride is much better than trying to put it in the body and have it absorb into the teeth. So, that's pretty easy to recognize. So, now we're saying the topical application of fluoride to get it on the teeth and to do a good job, that's the best way to do it. So, basically, why are we talking about fluoridation of the water? Well, then we get down to the last thing, and that is the old guys, you know, like I'm getting, being an old guy. Well, the situation there is that even a good body, a person's under proper health all the way through, only gets 50 percent of the fluoride out. So, in other words, when your body processes it, you reject this through your organs, and about 50 percent is all you get out of what you drink in. This builds up over time, and this is what we're talking about, this amount that builds up over time is what leads to the bone problems. And they see much elevated bone percentages of fluoride in the bones, and it leads to the brittleness and all the other problems. Okay, so I'm going to drop that for a moment. Okay. Next, fluoride, we talked about how does it absorb in the skin? Well, fluoride, it would be one of the fastest-absorbing things that you could touch. Fluoride loves water. HF just loves water. It forms like hydrates. When it touches the skin, the skin in your body is predominantly water, it will absorb into that just as rapidly as it can. And so, basically, fluoride is a very good absorbing liquid. Now, what does that mean? It doesn't mean that you're going to be, if you go into fluoride water, you're going to get all that amount, because absorption through the skin doesn't have as many, as much surface area as maybe through the lungs, so you might get it faster if you were breathing HF as a gas. But absorption through the skin is possible. It is rather rapid compared to any other molecule because of its size, and it would do more damage.
All right, Dick, your time is up.
Okay, let me just mention one more thing.
You've got 15 seconds.
Okay. Orange County has a green acres project, and they use reverse osmosis in that to purify the water. Now, when they get done with this water, it's so acid, it eats the calcium out of the concrete pipes, and they have to put in baking soda, bicarbonate of soda, to bring this up, to remove the acidic nature. Now, going through the reverse osmosis, that's a filter process, a very, very fine filter process. Now, what could get through there that could make it an acid? Because pure water is zero. Well, gee whiz, you know, HF molecule is smaller than the water molecule, and it will go through.
Okay, Dick, your time is up.
So, this is probably HF. Now, the only other object is fluoride.
Dick, your time is up. We really, we need to get into closed session, Dick.
I just pass this on, because you need to consider it.
Put it in writing to us, and we'll review it.
Okay. Last thing is that this builds up in your water supply, and you'll be using it from now on. That's what's happened in China and in India, and those poor people over there have no way to get rid of it. They pump it out of the wells. We're using a deep well. Thank God, it's pretty well not polluted, but all our local water is.
Thank you, Dick. Is there anybody else that wants to comment on this? All right, we have reached 5:30. With council's approval, we're going to limit public comments to three minutes now. So, you have three minutes, not five minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and city council members. I'll speak as quickly as possible. My name is Portia Weiss, and I live in Newport Beach, and I love it. I showed up a little bit late, but I did notice, I heard one of the experts, I don't know what his name is, make a blanket statement that we all drink soda pop. I don't know what kind of expert that could have been, because, oh, what did he base this fact? Is this fact that he was presenting to you today? I don't drink soda pop. None of my family members do, close friends. I just want to know what kind of other facts that he presented to you today, because I don't respect anybody who stands up as an expert and presents material that's not fact. I love Newport Beach. All the dentists that I've been to, and my son's been to, which I consider top-notch dentists in the United States, have never recommended fluoridation if my son ever started to get any kind of dental caries. They said, "What's he eating? What's, oh, that's a vitamin, the sucking on it? Okay, well, let's cut that out and see how it progresses." Never was fluoridation or prescribing fluoride to him ever brought up. And right away, they got into nutrition. And I think that we all know that Americans are getting more and more obese, the fast food, the sodas, whatever, and I think that we need to turn everything around. Instead of giving medication to fix the problem, that this poor nutrition and poor education about nutrition and hygiene have provided us, let's start getting back to basics and spend that money on nutrition in the schools and not just medicating the entire population. I did talk to somebody who has been manufacturing reverse osmosis machines for about 25 years, and has designed and manufactured them, and he told me flat out, reverse osmosis will not remove 100 percent of fluoride from water, ever. Also brought up the fact that we are having a water shortage. Why waste all the water? And making people get our systems when our tap water's great. What about forcing us to buy bottled water? Well, now the big issue is all the plastic estrogens that are in the bottled water affecting the reproduction, reproductive organs of people today. Let's just keep our tap water safe, please. Freedom of choice, medication, let's choose to take medication as needed. I can't see how any of you can support medicating the entire population with blanket medication. How do we know really how much is going to be in there? And how many doctor, how many of you have ever had a doctor give you fluoride, write a script for fluoride, saying, "Here, you need this"? I'd like to know if even one person in this room, outside of the blue suits that arrived today, anyone's ever been prescribed fluoride? Birth controls, maybe, maybe, who knows what, but definitely not fluoride. Let's not, let's think about it one more, one more time, and I really want to thank you for keeping the topic on the agenda and respecting our freedom of choice. We're living here in Newport Beach. We're so fortunate in being Americans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, do you want to speak, ma'am? Hurry up, we're running out of time. I'm going to close public comments.
The doctor said that I was under no compulsion to have the fluoride if I didn't want to. He mentioned the reverse osmosis. My family and I suffer from severe and potentially fatal multiple chemical sensitivities. One of the things we're specifically sensitive to is fluoride and mercury, which is also in the solution. I don't have $15,000 to $20,000 to have reverse osmosis put in my house, and you have to repipe your house because it pulls the minerals out of the pipes. I don't have the money. My sister has a disease, too. I just had to evacuate her from Santa Monica because they started putting it in Monday. They're going to hit us here next week. There was nowhere left to run. What do I do? Who's going to pay for my reverse osmosis system and get it in in time? Are you going to pay for it? You?
Ma'am, please direct your comments to us.
I have multiple chemical sensitivity. Who's going to take care of this? I have letters from doctors. This can be deadly to us. I'm not going to be able to drink it, and I'm not going to be able to take a bath, or wash my hands, or even wash clothes that have been washed in it. And there are a lot of people like me. I'm not the only one.
Did we get your name, ma'am?
Nina Kahootis.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this issue? All right, seeing no one, I'll close public comments. We have gone past 5:30. Did someone keep track of those questions that were asked? Unfortunately, we're out of time. So, what I'm going to recommend is that those questions will be answered and provided on the web. Is that, will that? Very good. Thank you. All right. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for coming down tonight and educating us on this topic. I appreciate the input that we received from the public on this topic, and that concludes the discussion on this topic. I do have to open up for public comments on non-agenda items. Anybody who wants to make a public comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we are adjourned.